All right, good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome. I am Lauren Christensen, the President of the Board, and I'm going to start to my right and have my fellow colleagues introduce themselves. Actually, I'm going to start with my left because it looks like someone's up. So, switching. Welcome, everyone. Amina Emma.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard. It's nice to see everyone.
Good evening. I'm Anubam Tuksidu. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Patrick Heer. Thanks for coming out tonight.
I'm Judy Westra. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Jennifer Voss, thank you for being here. Okay, Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Thank you, President Christensen. Good evening and welcome this evening. I'd like to begin by first introducing my administrative assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here, capturing our minutes, and also keeping us all on track. I'd like to also introduce Mr. John Krieger, who keeps us in line in terms of our technology and making sure that the community has the ability to follow the meeting if they're not here in person. I'd like the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. I'm Curtis Quinett, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening. Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Glad to see you this evening.
Good evening. Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. Abdul Madyan, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome. Liz Vertania Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
Josh Patterson, Plymouth Junior and Student Voice in Action Co-Chair. Good to see you all here tonight.
Okay, let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda and the approval of the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda. Action item 250146.
Madam Chair, I move that we modify tonight's agenda, moving citizens' comments to after C, board committee reports action.
Second it. Okay. So, the amended agenda item was moved, or excuse me, moved by member Voss and seconded by member Picard. And can you please repeat what you were asking to do?
I ask that we move tonight, that we modify tonight's agenda, moving citizens' comments to after C, board committee reports action.
Okay. And I'm going to open that up for some discussion from the team, then I'll call for the vote for the amendment.
Madam President, just out of clarity, are we moving, is there a motion to amend the agenda, and that's what we're going to discuss and vote on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is correct.
Madam Chair, this is my motion, and I would like the opportunity to speak first.
Please.
Last meeting, I made a motion to permanently move citizens' comments to after C, board committee reports action, and it was not voted on. I received an email saying that it would be discussed in a future workshop. My concern with this is that it may result in a decision behind closed doors, and I believe that the district should strive for transparency. I know firsthand what was said at the time when it was decided that citizens' comments were moved to the end of the meeting. Citizens have the right to know that this board moved comments to the end to make people wait and bury comments to the end. Hearing from citizens should be our number-one priority, letting citizens and families know that they are important. I understand that to permanently move comments may take further discussion. I want to vote to move the comments for tonight's meeting to after C, board committee reports in action.
All right. Anyone else have any comments around this suggestion?
My understanding is there's been some discussion on this already, and we've already had a process that we were going to bring forward to adjust and amend our process and have a formal conversation around this. I personally don't believe that it's a good idea for us to be having surprise agenda changes in every single meeting, and we're just bringing new items as part of that. I definitely think it very much merits a discussion around having our citizens' comments and where their right place is and how their function is, but I don't think that this is the right forum to be making those adjustments on the fly right now.
Anyone else?
Do you want to go in order, or?
Yes, let's go, let's go in order here.
Okay. I just want to follow board protocol and board governance. I've been on the board seven years, and we always follow a protocol in respect in getting the business done of the board as well as respecting people who have brought in items that are on the agenda to make sure that those get through. I love the idea of looking at where citizens' comment fits best for all of us, and I am not opposed to that topic. I just don't think today is the place to have that discussion. I think we had talked about in our planning meeting that this item would get added to the board governance workshop where we could look at policy and align board governance documents with policy, so we're all on the same page, and then come forward with an official vote in public where we're all on the same page with the same information. So, I am not opposed to the topic. I would like for us to wait until it is added with a board governance workshop, with policy, with supporting documents.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I'd just like to say at the last meeting, when the motion was made, there was never a moat, or a vote, to decide that we were going to do that. And when you make a motion, you have to either vote that you're going to postpone it, or what's your next thing that you're going to do? And we never voted on that. It was discussed, and then it was just right here following a brief discussion. It was clarified that this topic would be attitude future agenda. It was never voted on to be put for, and so according to Robert's Rules, you have to vote on it. You have to vote what you're going to do with the motion, so whether you're going to postpone it or not. So, there's never really a vote. So, if we're following the rules, that's kind of where I see it. And it didn't seem like it was, to me, it doesn't seem like it's a very hard thing to discuss or talk about or whatever. Just, I mean, basically, people don't have to wait to make comments. They can make their comments, and then they can leave. If there's kids, especially for kids that come, I've seen many times when there's been students here, and they have to wait for the whole meeting, and they have homework to do, or they have things to do. Or parents, they have, you know, they could be home, helping their kids do homework or getting ready for their next day. So, I just kind of, that's where I'm at. I think it, I think it is important, and I, I would go for trying it tonight. How many, how many do we have tonight? I mean, would it be a problem to do that tonight?
Member Amin.
I appreciate the comment about not having the public wait, but I do think that there's actually value in people who come to offer a public comment in observing the proceedings of a business meeting and understanding better how the board operates and how governance takes place. I also object to the comment about this board wanting to bury the comments of the public because I've joined this board recently, and I have no such intentions. So, I, that feels like ascribing intention to what, to me, feels like process. And I don't think that it's a good idea to change the agenda for this meeting. I do agree that it merits discussion amongst all seven of us about the process for future meetings or in the future. But I think as a matter of process, it's not wise to have surprise changes to the agenda.
And I'll just add to, I mean, Vice President Sidhu had alluded to this, too. We do have an upcoming board governance workshop. It is on our discussion, on our agenda this evening, to determine those dates. And as we're talking about overall board governance, including how we run our meetings, our operating principles, we've set our board goals, and this is an opportunity for all of us to reflect on that. I think the theming of that meeting really aligns with the citizens' comments discussion, and that is an open meeting for all to come. So, there is no, there's no intention to hide that discussion by any means, and notes do get, or meeting minutes do get published. And of course, there would be a, a public vote on that as well. So, I'm of the agreement that that was intended for the board workshop, and I really appreciate member Voss bringing that forward as an item for us to address because that is very important. As we know, that citizens' comments was changed during, during the pandemic, and this is a time to reflect and see if we want to adopt a change as, as a governing board.
So, if I can also just offer just a procedural perspective. Right now, we're looking for the adoption of the agenda.
Right.
So, what the vote would be on right now is we have a first and a second to amend the agenda to consider this. You wouldn't be voting on that topic tonight. So, I just want to clarify that, please. So, right now, you would look for a motion. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to include an action item this evening to consider that change. And then a majority would have to decide whether or not to amend that item to include that for discussion or action.
What I heard is that member Voss actually wants to change citizens' comments and move it up for this meeting. So, that would be.
I hear that. But, so I was offering in terms of the procedural piece. Right now, you're looking for the motion to amend the agenda. So, that has to be, because right now, you have the draft agenda before you.
Correct.
And so, you have a proper movement and a second to amend the agenda.
Right.
And the amendment would be that to add a place tonight to consider that change, to add it to C. So, what you are voting on is the board or the assembly is to whether or not to change the agenda this evening to amend it. And you have to do that by a majority of, of vote because we haven't. So, that's what you would be calling for, the vote, vote whether or not to amend this agenda to include that item tonight.
Okay. Can we still come?
Robert's Rules covers altering that agenda.
Correct. Yes. And really, to, to say it's always a surprise doesn't seem to be. It's another intentional thing that is brought up on somebody's intent.
Excuse me, Ms. Member Westra. I want to speak as well.
Right. So, I was going to suggest in the last year, last year, I believe it was, we had an excellent workshop on Robert's Rules and the conducting of school board meetings, right? And so that they, so that the business of the board got done without, without taking up, you know, valuable time. I'd like to propose that we have that training again. We have two new board members. I think it would be valuable to have that training again with all of us now that we've formed a new board. That's my only con, my only suggestion. I'm not going to make a motion on it. I'm just going to ask that it be considered.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to call for the vote to.
I would still like to discuss.
Oh, I apologize.
So, I just, I just want to say that, you know, to say everything's a surprise. I mean, it is part of the process. When I, when I take something off the consent agenda, I was accused of not being prepared and not having things. But that is part of the process of Robert Rules. And when we were trained, with a presenter that trained us said that she took something off any time that there was, that involved children or anything like that. So, there's, there shouldn't be any shame or feeling like we're surprising when you want to change or adjust an agenda. Some things come up that you can discuss or you haven't had a chance to, and those, that agenda, that's what the whole process is for, for when those things come up. And to say it's a surprise as if we're trying to do something. It's, it's, it's not necessarily that. And that's also accusing people of their intent. So, just wanted to comment that.
Okay.
Can I also remind board colleagues that the protocol is to send this information to the board president? The board president then works with Dr. Merritt and the vice president to align agenda items because we get agenda items all the time. I can name like five or 10 being added every week, and that has to be worked through both sides in terms of the administration and the board in ensuring that voices are heard, business gets done, and we have adequate time and adequate research to do all of that work. So, I would like to again emphasize protocol, going through the board president, letting the board president in the planning meeting figure out where that fits best because these things do get chunked.
Okay. I appreciate that. Anyone else?
I just would like to understand how much time and research we need to take to help our citizens to know how important their voice is.
I think that was more of a general statement for many board agenda items. Anyone else?
I just want to be clear again. So, when we have the vote, we are voting on changing tonight's agenda.
Amending the agenda.
Amending the agenda.
Amending the agenda tonight to allow citizens' comments to be at the, after item C, after the academic.
No, no.
What are we voting on then?
Dr. Merritt, could you, you did it well.
I'm slow.
No, it's okay. It's confusing. When you're looking to amend the agenda, and any board member has the ability to offer an amendment with a second, you're voting on whether or not to put that topic on the agenda this evening to take action. So, you would start this. So, say, for example, that were approved by a majority of vote, then we would add that as an action item. So, then you would have this discussion again, and you would actually take a vote on the item. So, right now, you're just voting as to whether or not we're going to amend the current agenda, draft agenda, to add this topic for a vote tonight.
So, what topic are we adding? Are we adding the discussion of changing the comments? Or are we adding the discussion of just changing tonight's?
Member Voss's motion would be to vote this evening to change the citizens' comments to fall under C on the agenda.
For this evening's meeting.
She is asking that for, I'm going to have you clarify. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So, she would be, currently is asking for an amendment to this agenda to put this vote on later to discuss whether or not that placement could be at that time. So, if you were to approve that, we could take that up as an action item. We typically would do it at the end of the agenda because that would be a fresh action item. So, we usually put it at the end of the agenda, but you can do it immediately following the approval of the consent agenda as well. This is your meeting, and you can determine where to put that. Is that clear?
Yeah. So, it's to put it on the agenda.
So, right now, you're only voting whether or not you would like to amend this agenda to consider an action item. You're not voting on the action item itself. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, you could vote as a majority. So, at least four of you would have to say, yes, we'll amend this, and we'll put this as a discussion in terms of where to, to vote on that action item. Or if you don't have a majority, then you would ask for another motion to approve the agenda as it is presented. Does that clarify?
Sure is. Got it. Okay. So, at this point, I'm going to call for the vote to approve.
Do we have a motion?
There's already a motion on the table from, for amendment. It's, member Voss has the amendment and seconded by member Picard.
Correct. Yep. So, at this point, I'm going to call for the vote to approve the agenda as amended. Those in favor, please say yes.
No, no, no. We're not approving the, the agenda as we, we're approving the request to amend the agenda.
Okay. And you probably want to say the whole motion. You're approving the request to amend the agenda to include an action item, item to consider the change of placement of citizens' comments to, before the letter C or whatever you said. Clarify, make sure I said your motion right.
So, another comment. Our normal process would be to discuss these at the end, right? To discuss changes to the amendments at the end.
Correct.
So.
For this meeting, because it, it affects the order of the agenda, I would recommend that we pull this action item up ahead because it affects the order of citizens' comments.
If it's approved.
If it's approved. Exactly.
So, we're voting on.
Whether or not to.
To change the agenda, change the agenda.
To amend.
To amend the agenda, to have comments after section C.
No. Amend the agenda to consider that. So, we would, if you were to approve that.
I know.
We would add, and you would start this discussion all over again, and there would be, I make a motion that we do a second, and then you consider.
All right.
It's a, it's a, yeah.
And that's great that we'll be talking about Robert's Rules and a new workshop at the end of this meeting today because it's a concept refresh.
It really is. It really is. So, I will call for the vote to, I'm going to probably mess this up, but to approve.
Amend.
Amend.
Yeah. To amend the agenda, to include an action item, to discuss the relocation of citizens' comments within our agenda. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no.
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 Motion, I don't, the motion failed. It was two to five, correct? Okay. All right. So, now I'm going to call.
So, I'd already moved.
Can you repeat your motion again?
Yeah.
So, I move to adopt our agenda and approve of our consent agenda. Action item 250146.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, please say yes.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
No. Okay. Motion carries five to two. All right. Mr. Madun, can you please take us through human resources?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We have one new hire for today. If the new hire is here, when I call your name, please stand up. We have Corinne Stemma-Tacos.
Nice work.
I was hired as the integrated science teacher at Pioneer. Welcome, welcome to Plymouth County Community Schools.
Thank you so much.
I can add just two cents. I know we talk about the work that the human resources department does to hire champions for our students, and I will absolutely say you nailed it in terms of an advocate for students, an advocate for PCCS, and we're so excited to welcome you to our team.
Thank you. I'll tell a quick, those of you who know, I've been around. We have a junior at the, at the park. And so, since he was in the little kiddie campus preschool, I've been standing at this microphone. Someone asked my seventh-grade daughter at Pioneer, how long has your mom wanted to teach? And Eliana said, I don't know, maybe like her whole life? So, the timing, everything has come full circle. I am thrilled to be part of the district, and thank you so much for having me. Yay.
And that's all we have for today.
Thank you very much. Okay. Onto celebrating success with member Sidhu or Vice President Sidhu. Oh, I, you know, I'm all.
What you just voted to approve, this is inconsistent of new hires. We definitely have our champion there. We also had leaves and resignations as well as the minutes for the special, special meeting on January 13th and the regular meeting on January 14th. Finally, you just approved the final reading of policy 3120-08 and 4120-08, the employment of personnel for co-curriculum.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're on to celebrating success with Vice President Sidhu.
Thank you. This is such a treat. Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, it is our privilege to recognize the Plymouth Community United Way and Plymouth Noon Rotary for their remarkable generosity in supporting the addition of AC, our emotional support dog to Halsing Elementary School. Is AC in the room?
She's trying to, she's a little bit overwhelming in here. Remember, she's only a puppy still. She's used to being around little kids every day. Girls, this room full of adults can be a little pushy.
What a good girl. Earlier in the 2023-24 school year, Plymouth Community United Way and Plymouth Noon Rotary together contributed a generous $6,000 gift to PCCS to fund the purchase and training of an emotional support dog for one of our Title I schools. Both of these wonderful organizations have made several significant contributions to a variety of programs throughout our district, and we are deeply grateful. Following this particular donation, Principal Jennifer Chambers, in collaboration with our trainer Abby Valpon, selected AC, a gentle Labrador mixed rescue puppy from a local shelter. AC has since become an integral part of Halsing Elementary Community, residing with Principal Chambers and accompanying her to school each day. This evening, we are thrilled to introduce AC to everyone. She is quickly becoming a beloved member of the Halsing family, bringing joy, comfort, and spirit of enthusiasm to both students and staff. Her presence fosters a welcoming and engaging learning environment, and we are so grateful for this incredible addition to our school. We would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to Plymouth Community United Way President Marie Morrow and PCUW Board Chair Lou Whitlock for joining us tonight. Would both of you please come up? Remember, she's a rescue? It's the clapping. This is the Plymouth Community United Way? Is that?
Yep.
Rotary Noon?
Yep.
Would either one of you like to say a few words?
Lou is the, Lou is our board chairman at the Plymouth United Way. I'm here on behalf of both the United Way and Rotary because it's my Rotary Club. Okay. So, Lou.
Just quickly. The, as your local Plymouth Community United Way, we, we continue to, we love to serve the community. We've been doing this for quite some time. I've personally been involved since I was plant manager of the Sheldon Road Plant with the United Way, and I've never been prouder of the work that we do on behalf of the community.
On behalf of Rotary, I want to also thank you because our Rotary Club, the Plymouth Rotary Noon Club, has been very active with the school district in a variety of things. So, this was a partnership that I kind of melded together to help the community. And we're always looking for additional partnerships with people to serve the community. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we are so excited to present both of you the Volunteer in Public Schools Award tonight, and we thank you for your continued support to PCCS. Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen. I'm the principal at Halsing, and I just really want to say thank you to, to Marie and Lou and the United Way for funding AC's training. And Abby, she, you see, she's phenomenal. She's a little overwhelmed tonight, but she's still a 10-month-old puppy. She's doing phenomenal with the kids, though. Phenomenal. She's been spending a lot of time there. And we, yeah, hi, honey. And we knew, you know, honestly, I knew she was going to bring joy to the kids, but her impact has been remarkable with the staff, the students. Because, yes. There we go. So, yeah, she just. Well, I, yeah, she, she is a noisy dog, but she is just, she's very, very much loved by the staff and the students, and she's been doing a great job. And my, my husband, Rob, says, too, like, that she, she brings a lot of joy to our house. A lot of chaos, but she brings a lot of joy as well. So, thank you very much. A lot of chaos, but she brings a lot of joy as well. So thank you very much. We appreciate that.
All right. Let's move on to Board Committee Reports in Action. I'll start with my president's report. It's fairly brief, but I have a couple of updates that I want to share with the community. One, you heard me at our last meeting talk about our, our search for committee members, or community committee members for each of our board-level committees. So that's policy, that's student performance and achievement, finance and operations, as well as student voice in action. We've extended that deadline for applications, because we're still looking for some citizens to join our, our committees. That extension is through February 3rd at 4:30 PM. You can apply by going onto our district website. It's front and center, right on the banner, and it takes you right to our Board of Education link where you can see some details about where, you know, who to submit to. That's actually Miss Diane Robertson. You can send your materials to her or your letter of intent. You are also welcome to bring any physical application, if you will, to, to this building during normal business hours, too. So we encourage you all to attend. Your voice is very important to us. We would love to have you on each of our board-level committees. As mentioned earlier in the meeting, too, we're looking to schedule an upcoming board governance workshop. And on our agenda, we have this as a discussion item to review some dates for availability. So I'm hoping that we can get that on our calendars very soon, because we do want to talk about things around our governor, governance, or communications protocols and meeting norms, perhaps. As mentioned, the citizens' comments discussion topic is very important. Our updating our board operating principles and other kind of team-building and governance discussion items. I think that's really it for today, so I will kick it over to Student Performance and Achievement with Judy Wistrath.
Madam President, the Student Performance and Achievement Committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is February 5th, next week, at 5:00 PM in this room. So we look forward, it's open, we look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you. Okay, on to Policy with Members Sedu.
Madam President, our policy meeting was canceled today due to a meeting notification error. I will meet with Mr. McKeon and Member Ahmed to go through a possible new date or seeing if we can add these agenda items to our next meeting. Our next meeting will be February 25th, 2025, 5:30 PM down the hall. Please join us if you can. We'd love to have you, and we already have some active citizens that we enjoy hearing from.
Onto Finance and Operations Committee with Member Keel.
Great. We met last Thursday here in this room at 5:00 PM, and we had a very exciting meeting, talking, initially chaired by, by Member Picard, who I was, because I was a few minutes late, and I appreciate that. We discussed some of the new Filter First legislation that's coming up from the state on water filtration in public schools and how the district is managing that process and addressing those issues. We also discussed some of the outcomes of the, the CREC, which is the... Exactly. The Consensus Revenue Estimating Committee, which is how the legislature and the governor come together to align on the found, the funding for this next budget cycle, which is really the beginning of our budget process that's starting in earnest right now. And lastly, we had a, our financial updates for December, for the month of December as part of that process. Our next meeting is Thursday, February 6th. It's 5:00 PM here in this room, and we welcome people to come.
Thank you. And then on to Student Voice in Action Committee. We have Josh Patterson.
So at yesterday's Student Voice in Action meeting, we discussed the election details for the co-chair positions, gathered specific grade level feedback on how to better engage and inform students on the mental health resources available to them from PCCS. And we worked together, Student Voice in Action co-chairs for the PCCS Mental Health and Wellness Fair coming up. Our next meeting will be on February 24th at 4:30, but the location is still being determined as we are trying to find the optimal location for our elections to be hosted. So.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, on to Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Christensen. Before actually beginning my superintendent's report, I just wanted to briefly just share, as we're navigating the current climate around immigration, I just want to reaffirm our commitment here in PCCS to creating and maintaining an environment that is welcoming and inclusive and safe for all of our students. As mandated by FERPA, which is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, we know that as a district, we are strictly prohibited from releasing student information without parent consent or judicial order. We have board policy in place, which is 5540, and we will continue to follow our board policy. Just wanted to also make sure that the community is aware that we are working with our administrative team, our colleagues across the county, our legal team, to create guidelines that are consistent, that can be distributed across our schools and staff to, again, ensure safety and support of all of our students and our staff. And these guidelines will continue to reinforce our dedication to providing a quality education to all students, regardless of immigration status. So just wanted to make sure that I shared that and just that, you know, that we're working actively to ensure that we're following our policies, following the law, and that we'll have consistent guidance across our district.
And as I go into my report, you never, you know, I never miss an opportunity to brag about our amazing students. So I just want to give a shout out to our very own Plymouth High School senior, Tara Creekmore. She recently was named the Michigan High School Athletic Association finalist for this year's Scholar-Athlete Award, recognizing her athletic excellence, her stellar academic record, and her community service. And this is the highest honor that MHSAA bestows on students each year. She's been recognized for her talents on the volleyball court for the Wildcats and has excelled academically at PCEP, earning a 3.94 GPA. She has chosen to attend St. Mary's University in San Antonio. Will she, will she will study forensic science? And there's 32 winners of the Scholar-Athlete Award, and this competition will be announced next month. So please join me in congratulating. I do want to share some work that our Food Services Department has been doing and invite members of the PCCS community who observe the Islamic holy month of Ramadan to provide feedback on a survey released by the PCCS Department of Food and Nutritional Services. As you may know, during Ramadan, which is observed February 28th through March 30th this year, students fast or refrain from eating during typical daylight hours. Our food service team serves, as you know, universal breakfast and lunch on weekdays during this time period. So the department is currently gauging interest from families that are taking part in Ramadan to see those meals that are prepared for the students during the day, if they would like to take those meals home in accordance with their tradition so that they can be eaten before sunrise or after sunset. So families can respond to this survey through links provided on district social media channels and on websites. We have, I know if Mr. Stewart were in the office, he would, he's been asking us, "When is this date coming?" I'm so excited to share that we are going to congratulate nine individuals and two teams that will be inducted into the Canton High School Athletics Hall of Fame next week. If you recall, this Hall of Fame ceremony was scheduled to take place prior to COVID, and it's been put on pause. So we're so glad to be able to recognize these outstanding teams. These are the inductees from the 1992 League Champions Boys Basketball Team and the 2006 Football Team, which went 12-2 and was division, league, district, and regional champions. And I just saw him walk through the door, our very own Executive Director of High School Education, Mr. Howell Hurd, is among the nine individual honorees. So again, these honorees will be honored at the basketball game. That'll be on January 31st, and the banquet will take place on February 1st. Please join me in congratulating. When we think about our dynamic plan, you all charged me, of course, with continuing to provide partnerships and expand opportunities for our students. And I'm so excited to share this evening that the PCCS instruction, as well as the Communication and Marketing Department, have collaborated with the Plymouth Community Chamber of Commerce and the Canton Chamber of Commerce to create meaningful career and internship opportunities for our students. A recent eballton from the Plymouth Chamber has informed local businesses about opportunities to hire PCCS students and graduates for part-time and full-time jobs, as well as skilled trades positions. The district's virtual job board allows businesses to post openings that would be suitable for our high school students. You listening, Josh? Just in case you might be interested. I see you peeking over there, seeking part-time work, as well as positions for recent graduates looking for on-the-job training in professional trades. PCCS is also hosting its annual CTE, that's our Career and Technical Education Trades and Hiring Fair, that will take place on February the 28th. That's this week, isn't it? Yeah. February. Okay. That will take place next week on the 27th. This event allows local businesses to connect directly with our students interested in career pathways. So again, we are moving towards achieving some of those goals that are represented in our dynamic plan, creating these partnerships that allow for these expanded opportunities for our young students. Finally, as we met our AC this evening, just want to make sure that we continue to salute and just love on our therapy dogs across the district. Many families around our district have had the chance to meet Echo, who is brought to us by the Kiwanis Club of Colonial Plymouth. Dani is a Labradoodle, who is a therapy dog at Canton High School with Counselor Aaron Dimmeras. Also on the PCEP campus is Spanual Lulabelle, who greets students with Spanish teacher, Lisa Nimmerich. Rue is a collie lab shepherd. Is that the right thing? He's a shepherd lab collie? He's a mix. He's well-known to students at Liberty Middle School. And finally, thanks to the grant from Priority Health, Charlie, the therapy dog, will work with students district-wide. So again, our students, our, our, our young therapy dogs are making positive impacts across the district, and we welcome them to the PCCS family. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, moving on to Communications and Marketing with Mr. Ruggiero.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Merritt, members of the board. I want to thank you all for inviting us to come speak to you tonight about our wonderful community education department. While the more, majority of the presentations that you receive are appropriately about our academic program, which is wonderful, but it's our pleasure tonight to tell you about one of our enrichment programs that we do a really great job with, and I'm really excited to introduce you to our team here. Before I do, as we do at all board presentations, we want you to know that the work we do in community education connects directly with our dynamic plan, and it's, includes the community engagement and partnerships, which is part of Strategic Goals B and C. I'd like to start by pointing out that this is an extremely efficient department. Tonight, you'll hear from Alicia Fenstermacher, who is our great community ed coordinator. She's part of a dynamic duo. There's just two in that department, but they, you'll see that they, they really create lots of opportunities for our community. She's assisted daily by Angela Nolan, who is also here tonight. You'll soon see the great offerings we provide the community with just two staff members. And some of you that have been around as long as I have remember that this department at one time had five members. So you'll see the great work that they do with just two. When I returned to the district seven years ago, I distinctly remember a conversation Dr. Merritt and I had. She was very clear with me about the departments that reported into our, into our office, and she said, "It's important that we break even. If we make a little money for the district, that's good. But Frank, I want you to focus on community, providing service to the community. It's very important that we give the community every opportunity to engage with our school district. That's what we're here for." So our community education team works very hard to remain competitive. They speak with other school districts so that they know what's being offered, if there's anything new out there, but they also check prices to make sure that we're very much in line. We also work with our municipalities to find out what they're offering, so we're not doubling up too much on offerings, and again, to make sure that we're charging the appropriate fees to our community for the classes that we offer. Finally, our communication, our community education offers these great ways for students and adults to try something without breaking the bank. I know that many of our board members here have children, lots of children in some cases, and they're very involved in sports, and we know that sports are very, they're a big deal, and they are. And, but to join some of these sports, particularly hockey and some others, it's very, very expensive. Now, we don't offer a hockey class, but we do offer lots of different classes, and it's a great way for people to try things without breaking the bank, and that's what we're really here to provide. So now I'd like to introduce Alicia Fenstermacher, our community education coordinator, and she'll take you through our slides tonight, which will be brief, and afterwards, we'll be happy to come back and answer any questions that you might have. So Alicia.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come tonight, speak about some highlights of our program. So topics, if I can get this to go here. Oh, did I do it too far? All right, there I am. There we go. So some topics that I'll go ahead and touch upon this evening are the programming that's offered year-round, how our seasons are set up, and the correlating enrollment windows, our presence in district facilities, as well as a quick overview of our registration process and how everybody stays informed about what's going on with our group. So the tagline "Countless Ways to Grow" is a, one that's been used by community ed for many years. For decades, the program has strived to provide an assortment of learning and growth opportunities for all ages. Our youth and adult programming is structured into two segments. So we have our foundational core weekly offerings that we have, and then we have our seasonal pillar programs, support programs. So as far as foundational enrichment opportunities go, these classes are available, again, to both youth and adults year-round. Some of our more popular courses are art, a variety of athletics, chess, musical theater, and STEM for the youth segment. For adults, some are most popular fall within the health and wellness segment. We also have other pillars that help support the overall structure and are vital to our program's success. So these seasonal slash pillar programs include our Community Education Basketball League, or better known as CEBL, that occurs fall, winter, and spring, and fourth and opportunity to K through 12. Our youth dance program, pre-K through 12, runs year-round, September to May, as well as our Stay and Play program also runs during the school year, September to June. That's for our two-year-old children with their parent or caregiver. Those are a little bit, while they run year-round, they are weekly classes. They're a little bit different than our foundational core classes in that our core classes will last, as Frank said, four, six weeks, eight weeks, to try something out. The youth dance and stay and play program actually are weekly for the entire year. We have our popular Safety Town Camp for incoming kindergarteners, as well as summer camps and classes, and a collaboration with Pstep Athletics to host clinics during the summer. And those are all opportunities that are there for our K through 12 group. These key programs support our enrichment and recreational base in our core classes. So as far as participation goes, speaking to our current enrollment numbers and a focus on growing the program even more, our weekly courses that run fall, winter, and spring, we continually have over 150 segments that we're making available to families throughout the year with thousands of participants yearly. Our CEBL is next most popular. We have about 800 players across all of our leagues and five different age groups. Our youth dance program supports 100 dancers with an opportunity to, for families to join in in our year-end recital and participate as well. Stay and Play is now offering AM and PM sessions, and we do that four days a week, and we have about 60 families that can participate year-round based on our space available. Safety Town will run again this summer for about five weeks, and we'll bring 300 campers in for that very popular program that teaches them some great things before they hit kindergarten. And our summer programming, along with our camps and clinics, will have about 100 different offerings that we'll do, and we expect about 1,000 or more to enroll. And one of the important things is that, you know, again, these are recent figures. We continue to strive to restore our numbers, you know, post-COVID, because we did see a large dip with the closure and worked really hard to get back into buildings and get, build the programming up again. So to grow these numbers, we really focus on building connections through unique experiences, you know, an environment where students can come in and really find enjoyment, feel comfortable and valued in the space, and want to come back and trust that they're going to have another good experience in the future, which helps lead to retention or perhaps even increased involvement. And it'll strengthen our program, but strengthen them as well. So as far as the seasons go, we're planning year-round, because again, we never stop. In the fall, we'll open registration actually in August, and we'll run programs September through mid-December, leading all the way up until the break. Those are our variety, multiple sessions that will run six or eight weeks long. And then once December gets here, we're already ready to kick off the winter and spring enrollment, which will take place, classes when we return from break in January, all the way until school gets out in mid-June. And then in April, we start our summer enrollment. That'll be the next one that we start here shortly, where we'll kick off summer camps and classes that take place right after school get out, all the way into August. And then we start all over again. We do actually, one side note is, based on demand, we will add additional courses throughout the year. So if something is really popular and we have a waitlist, we might even want to add things on to our existing coursework. So did want to point out that you will find us across the district, for sure, all throughout the school year. We use both indoor and outdoor spaces, and with recent bond improvements, it's allowed us to get into some of the new gyms, which has especially been helpful in the winter months to spread out and be able to offer more classes. Our after-school courses do, are in a variety of buildings across all elementaries after dismissal, and we do rotate our selection to different buildings so kids get, again, a sampling. They can try different things, art, STEM, chess, you name it, as we rotate it across the district throughout the school year. And then we are fortunate to have access to elementary, middle school, and high school for our evening and weekend programming. And using the district facilities really provides a series of benefits. So of course, familiarity with families who already know the buildings well, the advantage that we can spread out across the district to offer these, but yet we're central to all the neighborhoods, so they, you're really close by to something if you wanted to enroll right close to your house. And it also brings visibility to the district. People from surrounding areas are actually welcome to join in. You don't have to be Plymouth Kenton to, to jump in. We see a lot of students in charter schools that might not have certain programming that we offer, so they're actually welcome into our building to participate as well, as are, like I said, some from the surrounding areas. So they participate in the classes, hopefully enjoy the facility, and, you know, get to see what the district has to offer as well. So we work to establish a good rapport with the building since we are in so many, and, you know, there's a lot of great programs taking place. So it's really a goal of ours to find balance in sharing the spaces and offering these things. So as far as the registration process goes, or getting the word about, out about what we're offering, we have a presence on the district page under the department section, where people can go to get top-level information about community education, but it will read... where people can go to get top-level information about community education, but it will redirect you to our registration site, pccs reg dot leo dot com. It's a mouthful. But the Leo system is also used by our preschool and our extended A program, which is nice because it's a landing page where parents might be there enrolling in one thing, and then they can, you know, make a payment in another. So it's really had some great efficiency since we started using that a few weeks ago, or a few years ago, excuse me. So it's a dedicated website where we share full details about the courses, what's coming up, and it's round-the-clock registration. So if you're busy until midnight and forgot to enroll for basketball skills, you're welcome to jump on and do it at that time. And we do use district resources to promote our programming, ranging from the website, notifications, social media channels, school-level announcements, 881, radio features, you name it. We really started relying heavily on digital media, especially with COVID. We used to print a brochure and mail it to all households, but when that hit, we had to pivot because it was really hard to put things in a publication where things could be changing so frequently, or maybe not run because we couldn't get the enrollment numbers or things of that nature. So we do continue to think about other opportunities to do some printed pieces, so we are exploring that, but for right now, we're doing a heavy digital push. So really, in conclusion, as we continue to plan our next season, summer's right around the corner, we keep goals in mind and future initiatives such as enhancing our adult segment, which was more robust pre-COVID, so we're hoping to have some more things come back into the buildings for adults, looking into researching scholarship opportunities, and ensuring that we're meeting the needs of our customers and seeing, making sure we have the activities that they want to see in the buildings available to them. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you or perhaps a family member in one of our courses.
Great, thank you so much. I'm going to open it up for questions, starting with Josh.
I have no questions, but amazing presentation. Thank you.
Member Westra.
Thank you. Where is the community ed department, the two of you? Where is your office?
So at this time, we're located in the transportation building on Mill, right in front of East. So, yep, so we do have people sometimes come in, but conveniently, everything is online for registration, but we're always accessible in person, on the phone, or through the registration site.
I know that that office sometimes has been a little rough. Maybe we could look at finding office space for the two of you that is a little more comfortable?
Yeah.
I don't know if that would be possible, but...
It's an older building, you know, we do, well, we've floated a bit over my time with the district, going on 10 years. We've been in four different spaces, but since we're so small, it's easy for us to move around. We need a bit of storage because all these things that we put on, from basketball to dance to, you name it, we have a lot of supplies that we, we have to rely on. So, so we may do with what we have, but I appreciate the comment.
I know that you haven't had, like, heat or water at times, and so, you know, maybe we could look at...
Appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and that's, when the older buildings is a, kind of something that you deal with. But, but yeah, thank you.
Number Westra.
So I have a number of questions. The first of which is, I just did a rough calculation. I think conservatively, you serve at least 3,000 students per year?
Easily, yeah.
And that's conservatively, because it's probably closer to, what would you say, five or six thousand?
Probably five or six, and pre-COVID, maybe closer to eight to 10.
And you do that all with two part-time people?
One full, one part, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do have, we do have a great support staff in that, we have a dance, a dance instructors that teach our dance class, a coordinator that does help with our CEBL. So, so great support for those programs, but it is a lot to, to manage the overall, because we are researching and planning and then executing, making, and then doing the customer service on top of it. So, so I do want to give shout-out to everybody that helps behind the scenes to get these, these things out into the community. We have a lot of great relationships with outside vendors and franchises that'll come in and teach us nutty science, or, or golf and that sort of thing. So, so we're lucky to be able to rely on them. But yeah, as far as like the basic, you know, setup and execution, yes, we're a two-man crew.
That's an awful lot. What is, what is the budget for continuing, for community ed? We'd have to get that back to you.
Yeah, yeah, 350 to 450 is usually what we, we have, you know, available to us.
300 and 50?
350 for, yeah. Yep, so...
And that includes salaries. That includes salaries as well.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we'll pretty much put back into the program, every, everything that we're allocated to spend. So, so really what, to Frank's point, we try to keep the prices affordable, so the, but to make sure that we're covering cost.
And then kind of a question, as a, as a parent looking in, or as a community member looking in, and this isn't so much for you, I think it's more for Frank or Monica, we have community ed, we have Office of Student and Family Engagement, we have Kids Time, we have classes run, maybe not this year, but in the past, we've had teaching and classes run through teaching and learning. To a, to a parent or a family looking in, there's so many different registration systems, so many different people to, to contact, it feels like there's a lot of, a lot of cross-pollination that could go on between all of those. And I'm curious why, you know, community ed and student and family services are different, you know, I mean, you're under communications, right? Communications and marketing?
Correct, yes.
And I'm kind of wondering, organizationally and structurally, how we're, how we're doing that? Because it seems like there could be a lot of efficiencies gained and a lot more recognition gained if there was a lot more cross-pollination between student and family services and continuing ed.
And I'm probably speaking for you, there is actually cross-pollinization going on. So where you report and how we operate, I think are two different things. So they're constantly working and looking at partnerships. Some programs are paid programs, others are provided as a service from grants. So the different programs that you talk about meet a different need of the community, but they try to work together to not have redundancy at times.
Exactly. And we collaborate as we're able. So like I mentioned, getting ready to plan summer. So if there are going to be teaching and learning enrichment camps, what we've traditionally done is collaborate to figure out what kind of classes they're offering, what interests we have on our end, and, and try to find a balance where we're not, like you said, double-dipping too much, where we're offering too much of the same thing. We want to give different opportunities, and if we are, we might offer it on a different day or week of, of the summer, that sort of thing. So same thing with Kids Time, you know, we welcome those students to actually come to after-school programs, even though they're part of it. So we, we use that as an opportunity to promote it to that group as well, for them to join in the fun. And occasionally, we'll work with student and family engagement to help, you know, if it's a bigger program and they want to register it, we'll do the registration through our site to try to, you know, control it and get the information back to them.
And we've had forward-looking conversations, because the enrichment camps that we've run over the past few summers with teaching and learning have been grant-funded up until this summer, where there will be a cost. But we started last summer to build some cross-development so that ultimately, it will hand off to one department, so that, that, that the enrichment camps will all run under one department. So we're thinking ahead to that already, but we're also building it in structurally so that it's not overwhelming for anybody when it comes all at once, because we do have a lot of offerings for a lot of young people, which is a really amazing place to be. It also takes many hands, make light work, so that, you know, ensuring that everything is high-quality and then transitioning across.
I might add, Beth, Beth conducted a meeting last week with all of the summer programs together, and we talked about those, the very things you're mentioning. How do we, how do we work together? What buildings are being used? What buildings are under construction? All of that goes into it. But Beth led that group, and we were all, I mean, it, we started doing that just a year or two ago, and it really helps us keep everything together and early enough so that we can make good plans.
Okay. And just a final comment, it's an amazing program to be run by essentially a person and a half, and a huge asset to the community, so, and to the district. It's fantastic. So I commend you for your effort and, you know, continued representation of PCCS.
I might add, I don't know that other two people could do it. It is not unusual for these two to be, if there's a problem in the evening after they've already worked an eight-hour day to get out of the road, to get to the building, to make sure students and families are happy, they work really, really hard. They do a great job.
Thank you.
If I may, excuse me, Member Westra. This program, we had an investment of about $406,000.
Okay. Thank you. Still, not a huge budget for the bang for the buck. Okay. Member Keough.
So, thank you, Member Westra. You asked a lot of questions I was going to ask. With respect to the making the money, or understanding this, it, $406,000 the budget, what's the, are we break even? Are we, where are we at from a budget perspective?
In the quick notes, yes, we generally break even.
Okay.
That's just one years of data haven't looked back far.
And historically, is the program broken even, or is it, is it been a...
A little bit of both, yeah.
Okay.
Like, and any money that we do make goes back into a general fund.
Okay, great.
COVID has been, was difficult on us for a couple of years, but we are back to breaking even, even a little more, I think.
Okay, great. And then I guess the related question that, around participation, you know, there was a lot of numbers that were kind of capacity and space, and some that were participation. Not now, but if, in board notes, if we could get kind of the rough numbers of, of what is the participation, that would help us understand that?
Sure, absolutely.
And also, if you have any trends that, of where that participation has changed over time, that would be useful. I guess the, the big question I have is, you're touching a lot of people in our community and a lot of our students, and it seems like there's, as Member Westra mentioned and was discussed, there's some complementary capabilities that happen in this program to everything else that we're doing. If we wanted to grow the program or serve more students, are we, are we meeting everybody that, that needs to be served? Or is there something that we would need to do to, to help grow that program or to serve more?
Yes, so while we have things for all ages, space becomes a bit of an issue. For example, preschool aged, why we have our two-year-old stay and play program, and occasionally we'll have things like soccer tots or hoopster tots for those that might be three. Those will be in the early evening, because in the past, we've tried to do things during the day, but we are really limited on space. We used to host them at Allen Early Learning. Because school is in session, it's a little bit more difficult to reach that segment, for example. Adult, the reason why we kind of had to step back with COVID, you know, we had to kind of halt things, and we weren't in the buildings. We went virtual as best we could. Then, as soon as we were able to get back in, we were doing outdoor activities, progressing into evening activities for youth only, and then finally bringing adults back in the building. And in that time, we lost a big chunk of our customer base because other places were opening back up, and you know, you're going here for a fitness class instead, or karate, or whatever. So, so there's definitely the opportunity to better serve the adult community that wants to get into the building, right down their, you know, down the street from their house and take a cardio drumming class. So that definitely is something that I feel like we can sit down and see, we know, we know the groups that we can better serve, and now that we're on the right track, we'll be able to address some of that. But there are naturally some groups that are a little bit more difficult for us, just based on certain limitations or constraints, if that makes sense.
I might add, Mr. Keough, the addition of the new elementary gyms has helped us quite a bit. And as they come online, that does increase our opportunity to offer more classes, so...
Okay, excellent. I just, you know, the conversation is, we're in the beginning of the budget cycle, and as we're going through a zero-based budgeting process and talking about what we're doing, how does this program fit in with everything else we're doing? Where can we talk about growing?
Yes, and we know that there are things that people probably want to see offered. We haven't pushed it too hard, but in the past, we used to survey to see what the public would like to see, and it's something we'd like to do again in the future now that we're back on track. So if we're able to do that, we will get some more of that feedback. As far as are we serving everybody, and are we offering the things that they would like to see offered? And then those conversations then come. How do we do that? Can we do it within our, you know, space that is available to us? Or is it a budgetary thing? Or is it a, you know, resourcing as far as head count goes? So I think that, that would maybe be one of the next steps, to really analyze it further beyond that, and then see if there are any collaborations that can happen.
Great. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, is that I know the transportation building is part of our bond project, and that it is, I believe it's towards the end of that activity. But we've also had some discussions here, not necessarily from community ed, but from transportation, in doing some refreshing work. Has that happened already, or, okay?
On the transportation side, yes.
So is that something we should look into on the community ed side?
Yes, thank you. I've taken notes on this conversation to look into that. Absolutely. Thank you.
I, I just have a couple of comments. Thank you for asking your questions, because you took them off on me. I'm just really wondering, you know, how teaching and learning summer programming aligned with, with the community ed. So you answered those. I will say, we have taken advantage of the CEBL. My daughter is loving that, so kudos to, to you guys. It's a, it's a fun program. But more or less, just as we're starting to plan for summer camps, we're getting inundated, early time getting inundated with some marketing for other camps that have already opened registration in January and in February. And I noticed you put on our presentation that we open up registration in April. I know that's something that we've talked about from even the teaching and learning standpoint. It might be advantageous to push that up, to try to capture some of that market share where, where, when parents are already planning. It sounds crazy, but we're already planning for summer.
Yeah.
So, just, that's just a, a comment and, and something to consider.
Yeah, and we definitely, I feel so, we would probably be in a position to offer it a bit earlier, but we have to wait to verify what buildings we'll be able to use during the summer. So it is a big jigsaw puzzle that, you know, has to, has to happen.
Yeah.
And so, so we wait patiently to find out where we, where we can be. Then we fan out to all of our vendors or staff to figure out, okay, how does this work into what you may already be offering or thinking about offering at other locations? But definitely, we see that January, February now even, some are getting on summer to try to grab people and get them into their program.
Correct.
So it's top of mind, for sure. And then as soon, but as soon as we have the information that we need, we're hitting the ground running with formulating things so we can roll it out. April, beginning of April is usually when we offer it, and if we can get them going earlier, we will.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to echo President Christensen's comments with regard to my child. Also took advantage of a lot of the programs, loved them. I know many families that I talk to love these programs, so kudos to all of you doing a great job, keeping our, not just our youth, but our adults engaged in this whole process. And agree with President Christensen in terms of if there's a way to push those dates out early, so people can plan. One question, what is the number, what's the minimum number of people needed to have a class run?
Yeah, great question. So it will depend on the type of class. Some classes, it's usually about six to eight, and then, but, then it might go up to 12 to 14, because depending on the style of class, we might want to have that more of a one-on-one, say for, for an art class or a chess class. But others, like pickleball, we might be able to, you know, start with maybe eight people, but go all the way up to 30 and incorporate a large number. So it really just depends on the type of activity, how the class is taught and structured, and the space that we have to teach it in, so.
Thank you.
So yeah, so the enrichment style tend to be the six to 12 range, and then the athletics can go a little bit larger.
Number Card? I just have a question. Do you use other community facilities then? Like, or is it just basically the school? Because I remember in the past...
Yeah, so pretty much the school district. Sometimes we'll partner with outside groups, like a Taekwondo class, let's say, where they just have a better foundation for having the mats and the safety equipment and that sort of thing. With COVID, we stepped back on a lot of those outside relationships and brought everything in, so it was in our control. So at this time, we're primarily teaching things inside, except during the summer. We actually partner with Hickory Creek Golf Course, and we do lessons there as well.
Okay, well, thank you. Nice presentation. Remember, I'm in.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed your programs. My children have enjoyed your programs. And I just have a quick question around, I guess, scaling and pulling back. Are there specific courses or types of courses where you've had to cancel due to low enrollment? And where do you typically see waitlists?
Yeah, yep, so, so we will. So first thing that we'll do is we'll try our best, if we're really close to the, to the minimum number, to fill it, or even in some cases, try to work with the person who's going to be teaching it to lower the number so the class can go. The next step would be trying to push those people into a different upcoming class or a different location, so we're not losing them in general, and they're still getting to enjoy the experience. So occasionally, we will have to cancel, but we will keep tabs on those people so that So occasionally, we will have to cancel, but we will keep tabs on those people so that if we're offering it again in the near future, we'll let them know first and foremost if they wanna sign up and jump back in. We'll get in contact with them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate your time. Okay, moving on to Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick. We actually have an action item here, number 250147. This is Consider Approval of a Resolution for Bid Pack Number EL-5. This is for Faren Elementary School Addition and Renovation. This is a final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for Bid Package EL-5, Faren Elementary School Addition and Renovation. Final reading, Action Item 250147.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Secretary Westra. We did discuss this at our last board meeting, but I will open it up for any other questions or comments. No? Hearing none? I'm gonna call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. All right, moving on to Citizens' comments. It looks like we have a few here. All right, we have Gregory Pappas.
Thank you. As some of you may know, on Thursday of last week, Smith School had a lockdown because there was a, I think it was a spouse of one of the teachers that was being abusive in the, I've got two grandkids there. And my son, who lives in Plymouth, hasn't known him, he's gonna be going to school here two years from now. The lockdown started on Thursday, and on Friday, my son asked me to take his other son out of school because he was under the understanding there was a lockdown. So I called the school. They said there was not a lockdown on Friday. My son said, "There is." So I called the police. They're the ones that's doing the lockdown. They said there was. Okay, so there's a conflict that I think you should resolve somehow. At the time, the principal was not there. I think he was taking surgery or something. I can't remember his name. So the vice principal was there, but I didn't, I don't know exactly who I was talking to. I wasn't, I was disappointed that she said there wasn't a lockdown, and she wasn't forthcoming completely. She should've told me they had one in the morning and left it later in the day, okay? I would've understood. Child's safety, I'm sure you guys all, you know, you have that as a top priority. It is for me, and for my son, and for my grandkids. I was hoping, I don't know if it's resolved, there's not a lot of communication as to what's happened. I don't know why there's, there's not a lockdown now, because I walked past it. I live a half a block from the school, so I walked past, there's no police there. I hope it's resolved. I would hope that in the future, that when you have a conflict like that, because you can't control, that poor teacher, she can't control what her husband does, okay? That she can maybe be put on, paid administrative leave or some such thing and have a substitute go in for until it's resolved. Because we don't know how long this is gonna last, okay? And so I just wanna bring that to your attention. And I don't know what the policy is. If you could tell me what the policy is when this occurs, I appreciate it. Thank you. I only got a few minutes. I got an 8:30, excuse me.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have Keegan Mada.
Do you have a comment on the policy?
Somebody from our office will get back in touch with you.
Okay, you having a phone encounter?
Yes, we do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. By the way, I wanna say one other thing. It'd be really good if you had any comments in the chat, okay? They had to change the meeting on the fly from the phone. And citizens should've been come first.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all of your service to our community. I know you guys put in a lot of hours. Parents are thankful. I've been a PCCS parent for seven years. I have three young children in the district, and the thing the district does best is hire amazing teachers. Every single teacher that I've had over the past several years has been wonderful. We've not ever run into a teacher or staff member that we didn't love in the district, so, so thankful for them. So it's 8:15. I got here at 6:45. I wasn't aware there was gonna be a discussion at the beginning of the meeting about citizens' comments. But I do remember Board Member Voss bringing it up at the last meeting. So I was just curious to know why it wasn't on the agenda tonight. If, I feel like, when she brought it up last week, if it could've been put on the agenda, we could've avoided that 20-minute discussion that honestly felt a little bit disrespectful to all the guests here. So making parents wait almost two hours to speak for three minutes with like an intimidating clock countdown sends the message that you don't wanna hear what parents have to say. I was really impacted at a board meeting back in September. A mom spoke about her concerns for the safety of her two autistic children at a PCCS elementary school. And I just felt it was so wrong that she had to take the whole evening to be away from them, just to come advocate for them. I am thankful that parents were able to have their say in the November election. I don't need to remind you that Jennifer won her board seat by over 2,000 votes. The only board member that attended her swearing-in was Mrs. Pickard. Thank you for attending, and thank you Superintendent Merritt for attending. As a parent, chatting, three small kids out in the community, my kids play sports, so I know a lot of moms. I can tell you, there's a lot of excitement for what Jennifer brings to the school board, which is actually having kids in the district. So I think, like, those of us who voted for her are paying attention. We do want her ideas to be heard, and we look forward to electing more board members like her in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Lori, is it Moyers? Did I pronounce that correctly? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, how do you say her name?
I'm Lori Mayers.
Mayers, okay.
Yeah, and I live in the city of Plymouth. I'm president of the PFLAG Plymouth Canton Chapter, which has been advocating for LGBTQ people and their families in this community since 2014. So after I listened to the January 14th school board meeting and in the wake of the new presidential administration, I want to affirm our chapter's support for diverse and supportive schools. This includes the Schools of Choice Program, which allows students from outside the district to attend their schools. We also support student-led GSAs and PSAP's Queer Youth Committee, as well as LGBTQ teachers and staff. We support transgender and non-binary students, who are currently the targets of much misinformation and fear. The hateful rhetoric we are hearing nationally is producing anxiety and fear in our own community. We ask the school board to keep this in mind and to always act with compassion to our minority students, whether they are immigrants, people of color, or LGBTQ students, or all of the above. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we have, and I apologize, I think I'm mispronouncing this already. Lazarin Carroll?
You got it.
Oh, all right.
So I apologize, I've got a mask on. My mom has cancer, so I gotta be really careful. I speak here as a transgender man. I went to Plymouth Canton School, Plymouth, actually, graduated in '09. And as Lori said, there's a lot of misinformation, and I think a lot of it comes down to, people don't know who we are. They don't see the faces of, they just hear things that are just, quite frankly, false and inflammatory. And I think, in the aspect of cooperation, it's important to have a dialogue for us to talk. We're not here to disrupt anything. We're not here to indoctrinate children. We're not here to do any of that. I just wanna live my life. I just wanna walk my dogs. I wanna hang out with my friends. I just want to exist. And no matter what legislation gets passed, we will always exist. You can't legislate away a soul. You can't legislate away somebody who is just innately here. And I wanted to comment further. On January 30th, so this Thursday, the coalition that I'm a part of, Transgender Unity Coalition, we will be holding rallies across the United States, confirmed in multiple states, California, Georgia, Ohio. But we will be marching on the Capitol, and we will be there to talk. We will have an open dialogue. We want people to understand who we are. We're not a scary boogeyman, like, truly. That's really all that I had to say, and I hope that the school board can take the time to know thy enemy and love thy enemy, you know? That's a lesson in the Bible, isn't it? Yeah, I yield my time.
Okay, thank you. That concludes citizens' comments. Now we're on to Section F.
We didn't know we needed to sign up, and we have something to say. Can we be added?
So we make an announcement at the beginning of every meeting that we have our citizens' comments paperwork out, out in the hallway, and that it needs to be turned in by 7:00 PM. That, that's our standard protocol.
That we're complaining about, okay, I see.
Yes.
We didn't get here until a little bit after 7:00. It was a fire at home.
Okay. I understand that you weren't here in time. I'll allow it if you'd like to stand.
Thank you so much.
We would do, we do ask that you fill out a citizens' comment form with your contact information, so that we can just follow up with you afterwards.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Adi Peskis. I have two kids in PCCS schools. My youngest is an eighth grader at East Middle. This year, just a few days into the new semester, after the presidential inauguration, my 13-year-old child was bullied by other students on social media and told to kill themselves. The video singled them out because of their gender identity and featured footage of Donald Trump's speech after signing his executive order reversing protections for children like mine in education. I was notified of the incident by school staff, but was told that the school could not punish the students responsible because it happened outside of school hours. I would like to know if this school board will stand up for the children in our district against the hatred against minorities that is being encouraged by Donald Trump and his administration. I ask about minorities in general, because we are also a Jewish family. And we have already seen in Charlottesville, Virginia, in 2017, the kind of hatred that Donald Trump incites and encourages. So I want to know what steps, what proactive steps, and not just reacting after the fact, this board will take to preserve a safe learning environment for all the children in our schools. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that does conclude citizens' comments. We will move to the discussion section. So as mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are planning for a board governance workshop. There are a few dates that have been floated by a potential facilitator. I'll ask that Dr. Merritt share those, and we can look at our calendars and see if there's one that aligns with our schedules.
So thank you, President Christensen. I was tasked with connecting with MASB to find a facilitator assigned to work with our team. And we have been assigned a Ms. Penny McWilliams. And we are looking to host a board governance workshop. She says we would need approximately three hours. So I did ask the question, would a Saturday be something that would be available? And those are available dates for her as well. So we wanted to just talk through this evening to see what date we could potentially agree to put on the books. I would then take those dates back to her to confirm. She has shared with me, in terms of Saturdays, she's available, but except for, she's not available February 8th, February 15th, March 8th, or March 29th. That would be Saturdays, so we can look at any other dates.
That's the one she's not available.
Not available, right.
And how long would the session be?
Approximately three hours.
Three hours, okay.
I'm serious. The 8th and 15th of February, and what were the March dates?
March 8th and March 29th, so those cannot be considered.
Can we get the dates that are considerable, so I can look at those dates?
So anything wide open, that was just February, March. So let's, or those are just Saturdays, and then other dates that she's booked would be for the month of February, the 7th, the 13th, the 20th, and the 28th. So why don't we just start with saying, do you wanna look at a Saturday? Or you would like to do something in the evening, like a five to eight, or something like that? Maybe have that discussion, and then throw some dates out.
My preference would be a Saturday. So we're not constrained and we're not, we're fresh.
Yeah, I've, I've attended board workshops on the weekends, and typically, and we don't start incredibly early, we don't have to. But I tend to agree with Treasurer Keough, it's, it's a fresh day, it's a fresh set of eyes. It's not tacked on to any other meeting. So I, I could do a Saturday as well, but I'm, I'm open to a weekday if that works better, too.
We're not talking about this upcoming Saturday, the first.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, so, so the soonest date that we'd be looking at would be the 22nd?
Correct.
Dr. Merritt, is that an available date?
Let me check the calendar from her. That she didn't say it was not available, so yes, that is available, February 22nd would be.
22nd, I have a conflict, yeah, exactly. I'm just looking, I have a conflict on that.
So then, the next date would be March 1st, right?
First, first of all, for me.
Yep.
I'm open. I'm not sure, but it sounds okay.
March 1st, I'm open, all day.
Possibility is March 1st is one date. Can we get a?
I'm open after 1:00 PM.
After 1:00 PM, okay. All right, is there an alternative date that we wanna pencil in as a secondary option?
So the next date would be the 15th, I believe.
March 15th, yes.
I'm not available on the 15th.
There's an MASB class that we saw that day.
How about during the week, kind of backing up from the 22nd? And kind of moving it forward? Is there any other?
Backing up from 22nd, what?
Of February. Didn't we say that February 22nd was?
Yeah.
A, a potential option, but do we have any weekdays maybe leading up to that, too, as, as a secondary option?
We said March 1st.
What week?
So March 1 is an option on Saturday.
That's the only thing I had written down so far, March 1.
After 1.
Oh, March 1.
Was it March 1?
I'm sorry. I thought it was the 22nd. I apologize.
So what dates are we looking?
I don't know.
So right now, the first date you offered is March 1st after 1 o'clock, which is a Saturday. And I think President Christensen is suggesting that we look for an alternative date as well, sooner than March the 1st.
Correct.
And the week before the March the 1st?
Yes, if there's, if there's a weekday, seemingly, that the Saturdays don't seem to work.
So the 25th is a board meeting, so that's out.
Are Wednesday evenings okay as, as an alternative to a weekend?
Not for me.
Not for you, okay.
Not, not generally.
You guys wanna hang out Friday night together?
Sure.
Fridays, Wednesdays.
It depends on the week, so.
Sure.
I just lay, I don't. I just lay.
What dates are we considering?
I don't wanna do a Friday evening either.
Does the 19th work for people?
The 19th?
February 19th, is it a Wednesday?
No.
Okay.
The 20th?
I've got Finance and Operations meeting that day, and I'm not, I don't really wanna have a three-hour workshop after that.
All right, well, let's, let's see how March 1st goes.
Can we also look at the 22nd of March? Because that was the other date that was potentially available.
Which date? March?
Yes, I have, was.
That's spring break.
22nd is?
Yes. Spring break begins at 20, Monday, the 24th.
But people, if they decide to leave on that weekend, so.
Oh, you were saying a different spring break. You're saying college spring break is the 15th?
Oh, you're right, yeah. I'm not available on that.
Is that a not available also on the 15th?
I know, we're saying March 15th.
When was March 15th?
Would Tuesday, the 18th work for people, because there's not a board meeting that day?
What day?
Tuesday, February Tuesday, the 18th as a backup?
I have a tentative coffee with Monica, but we, we haven't published. I have a tentative coffee with Monica, but we, we haven't publicized it, so we could reschedule that if we needed to.
I'm not, so.
What about March 18th?
14th?
18th.
18th.
And then would you just?
No, she said February. I'm saying March.
I'm done with that.
I can have March 18th.
I'm March, I'm for you on March 18th.
March 18th, what would be a start time?
Oh, wait, no, I'm not.
Yep.
Okay. No, I'm not. So I suggest, since we've kind of played popcorn around our calendars, let's just, since March 1st seems to be primarily open for all of us after 1:00 PM, let's confirm with Ms. McWilliams that we can do something in the afternoon. If that becomes problematic, we can share some other available dates at a, via email.
Madam President, can I just add for the audience and people that are watching that these are public meetings?
Absolutely.
So once a date has been established, we will post that on our website as well as outside the board office. And we welcome anyone to attend that public meeting.
May I ask, did you look at February 4th, a non-Tuesday, a non-board meeting Tuesday? Did you look at that one?
I am out of town for business.
Okay, so we'll stick with March 1st.
Next Tuesday, a week from today. Okay? March 1st.
All right, I will touch base with her tomorrow and confirm that date in board notes on Friday.
Thank you very much, everybody, for peeking at your calendars. Okay, so moving on to the follow-up board questions. We had a couple from last meeting that I believe have been answered. One about the fall data presentation, wondering if the national norms are available, K through 2. We received that in the email. And then there was another from the fall data presentation, just long trend data from the last four years. And we also received that as a board.
It was very, very helpful, the long trend data. It's like, in some cases, we're steadily going down, but in other cases, we're seeing that it's steadily going up. So I think in the future, it would be good if we continue to include that long trend data in that report. It would really give us more context.
Thank you. And then from this evening, I captured one question around the community ed presentation, a question around the participation, how that has changed over time in the programs. Any others that I missed? All right, at this time, we're going to have a short recess and we will transition into our board assessment and data workshop. Again, this is an open meeting, so we encourage, you know, anyone who wishes to, to stay and, and see this workshop with us. You're welcome to, to hang out or you're welcome to leave.
How long will that last?
The workshop, I think we're planning, is it 45 minutes?
Probably a maximum of 45 minutes. And the framing of it is, it's a data and assessment literacy workshop. So we're helping build common language around assessment and data terminology.
Thank you very much.